I'm going to call this special meeting of the Newington Board of Education to order on Monday, June 25th, 2018 at 8:00 PM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now move into public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Our phones are open at 860-665-8736. And before you start, Rose, I just want to let folks know that it's partially my fault and partially the town council's fault why there's no administrators here tonight. We need to do something with our ed specs, which is actually item one. So this meeting had to happen tonight before the council meeting tomorrow night. Unfortunately, it's our administrator's end-of-the-year retreat, so they are working right now, just not in the boardroom with us. So I apologize for that for everyone in the public. And Ms. Lyons, please go ahead.
There you go.
Okay. Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. I have been to more Board of Education meetings this year, or listened from home than I have in several years past. Unfortunately, it's because of the drama around the oil spill, the education grant, and everything else. I am saddened to see that one of your agenda items is the resignation and agreement, and I'm assuming it's of Dr. Collins because there's no attachments to this. I hope tonight, as I sit here, I hear some reason other than the oil spill or the education grant being the reason why he is resigning. The drama around this is very disturbing to me. As a resident, as a taxpayer, I'd like to hear an explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
John Bishan, 56, Maple Avenue. A couple of questions for you. I think they're pretty simple. First of all, was there any attempt made to make this meeting known to the public? Because I looked on the town website, I looked on the Board of Ed website, and I couldn't find a thing. Of course, I heard about it with social media chatter, but if you could answer that question, I'd appreciate it. Also, it was reported that the super had two years left in his contract. I believe it was only one. Excuse me. So I agree with Rose that I don't think that the oil spill alone was reason after the fact that it was all paid for and cleaned up and there was no actual cost to the town beforehand. And even going into it, there was enough reason to hold him accountable, but not personally responsible, in my opinion. So I started to defend him at some point, as some of you might be aware. I thought that the, that report was a sham. That report that came out did nothing to, you know, make him more responsible. If anything, I thought it offered some litigating situations in it. So, excuse me, I'm out of breath because I ran up here to catch the meeting. So again, I would like to hear your thinking going into this. You were preempted, obviously, you know now. You were preempted with a news report. The superintendent made a press release, or for all intents and purposes, it was a press release preempting this meeting. So he's claiming that the oil spill had nothing to do with it. Most people believe that it did. And if it did, and you know it did, in other words, you negotiated behind the scenes to kind of persuade him to retire, excuse me, then I think you owe an explanation to that. And I think that if you stay quiet on that, or just go along with the whole thing, that it was a mutual retirement, I don't think that's, that doesn't go very far to the whole transparency thing that we're supposed to be working towards. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bishan. I will just clarify, we did file a public agenda with the town clerk's office on Friday. Mrs. Kenny.
Hi, Mady Kenny, 53 Crestview Drive. And part of me is going to cop out and say ditto to what Rose said. My heart is beating very fast because I don't particularly like what I'm going to say. I want to just remind you of what transpired at one of the council meetings where the chum was thrown in the water. It started with the town manager, and it went round the table, vilifying without any opportunity for Dr. Collins to be there to respond. I was ashamed. The other thing, I was just curious about when they talk about chain of command and responsibility. He is your employee. Would you not, in fact, be the place where the buck stops? I don't know. But I do appreciate all that you do. I also have appreciated what Dr. Collins has done. He said, she said. I honestly don't know who or what to believe anymore. But in my heart, I do believe that that man worked for the children, and that was his job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny. Come on up.
Evening, everyone. I'm Joe Duggan, 17 Dover Road, Newington, Connecticut. And I just came here this evening to publicly thank and acknowledge Dr. Collins for everything he's done for the school district. I think he's a true visionary. You look at the academies he's put in place, the technology advances he'd made for the Newington schools. Other schools try to replicate and duplicate that. It's a very difficult thing to do. My family's been in the Newington school system for over 30 years as both students and employees. And during that time, the effort Dr. Collins has put in to make this place a better town and a better educational system for everyone involved has been phenomenal. He's taken so much time away from his family and his particular interests to do things of that nature. It's something we really appreciate and acknowledge. I believe most of the folks in Newington will agree with me that he's done a tremendous job. And I just wanted to be here to publicly thank and acknowledge him for everything he's done. And just thank Dr. Collins for that. And I appreciate all his efforts and everything he's done to improve the town in terms of education for both the students, the teachers, and everyone who works here. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duggan.
Thank you.
Jen Rodriguez, 71 Northwood Road. I, much like Joe, and kind of take it out of your words, the ditto Joe portion there, my family has been in this town and been a part of the education system, self-included as a teacher in this town and a parent in this town for over 30 years. And I've seen many superintendents come through as a student, a parent, and as an educator. And by far, Dr. Collins has been amongst the best here. His vision, what he's done with the district, where he's taken us, where he's taken our students. My daughter benefited for that when she graduated in 2013. My son is going into fifth grade at the middle school level and is excited about the academies that are coming up. And my hope is that his work is continued, even if he is not here, and that his legacy lives on, even though he has, in my opinion, been pushed out by the public and a particular party who's been pretty much out to get him for quite some time. And I think it's a stain on the town of Newington in terms of the behavior and how he has been treated. And I am a member of that party, and I can tell you that I find it absolutely disgusting. So I feel for him. I feel for the amount of work that he has put in. I know that you guys have put in a tremendous amount of work as well in your duties and responsibilities. And it just saddens me to see that a man of such a long career and so much service to this town, not only as a superintendent, but also as an administrator within this town and other functions, has been really treated this way. So it's very upsetting, as a parent and as an educator.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Seeing no further public and no one on the phone lines, we will move on to new business. Action item one is education specifications. If I can have someone read the first recommended motion so we can start discussion. Ms. Gion.
Move the Board of Education to approve the education specifications for the Special Education Transition Academy located at Newington Town Hall.
And a second by Mr. Sylvia. So this is something we've been discussing for a bit of time. Things were supposed to be a little bit easier in terms of the motions that we were passing, but there have been some developments over the last week or so that have led to four motions tonight instead of two with different ed specs than those that we had previously looked at in our meetings. So the reasons for that are mainly because there was a meeting between Board Administration, Planning, Building Committee members, as well as Town Counselor, and at the Department of Education School Construction Office. So at the, the previous plan had been for our Transition Academy to go into a trailer on the property at Town Hall. The Department of Ed shook their head vociferously at that, letting us know that not only would they not be, not only would a grant application not be considered if they were in a trailer for a period of time, but there could be further consequences for the district if that happened. It's just not an appropriate environment for them. Certainly don't disagree with them. So as a result of that, there are several different issues that follow along with it as we go through the process. As we all know, the Transition Academy is scheduled to be the, that and the Human Capital Development Offices are the only parts of Town Hall that are going to be demolished during the construction process of the new Town Hall construction, which means that we have to house our Transition Academy somewhere. If they can't be in trailers, that leads into several questions as to where are we going to go. They can go into a school building temporarily. However, we don't have an appropriate space. It would not be appropriate generally to house them in an elementary or a middle school. At the high school, we don't have a clearly identified space that we could use without severely impacting our programming there. So it turns into questions of, does it make more sense to have, build something by itself, to purchase a storefront or a residential home in town to convert into a Transition Academy like places like Weathersfield have done? There are a plethora of options that need to be discussed. Obviously, today is not the time to make any decisions. The Town Council and the Building Committee are well aware of what came out of that meeting. As a result of that, there are, there is this motion and one other motion for the Transition Academy, and the same thing follows for the Board Administration Offices. One, do you want to house them in the same building with Town Hall, or is it better for the town to have a separate building? Does that make more sense? Will it help with timelines? Will it be less expensive? All those sorts of things. So in order for maximum flexibility for the Building Committee and the Council, the recommendation from the administration is to pass two separate motions. One, to house the Transition Academy at the new Town Hall, as is the first motion that was read and we are discussing now. The second is at an alternate site. In terms of, and I'll comment on the administration side of it afterwards, is there any questions or comments on this first motion and really the second part with the Transition Academy? Okay. Seeing none, and for members of the public curious why there's no questions, we did get an email from the administration explaining this already, so I was kind of just recapping that. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Can I have someone read the second recommended motion? Mr. Vassella?
Move the Newington Board of Education to approve the education specifications for the Special Education Transition Academy located at an alternate site.
And a second by Mrs. Gion. Again, this is the second half of that. I passed around, and there's a few extra copies in the back. There has been an edit to this since we looked at it three days ago. There was an edit yesterday. That's the shaded gray portion on there. This came out of a meeting earlier today with the council leadership and the administration. Just, they wanted to be sure that there was an option. In the event, it made more sense to build a standalone building, and that helped. The council leadership asked that that be made part of the ed specs, that that could be a path that goes on. So this is in line with that. It allows for maximum flexibility in decision-making so that we don't have to make a rash decision, and we can be deliberate about things. The one thing I didn't mention in the introductory comments is that there would be four applications going in, assuming the council passes their motions. We would withdraw two of those grant applications at some point during the process, and that's perfectly acceptable in terms of the Department of Ed is what I'm told. So it just allows for flexibility so that while we make those decisions and those long-term plans, we have four options available, two for each, and one would be withdrawn based on what was decided to be done. Any questions on the second motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Can I have someone read the third recommended motion? Mr. Sylvia?
Move that the Newington Board of Education approve the education specifications for the Board of Education Administrative Offices located at a school site in Newington.
And a second by Mr. Tufel. This is very different. Again, like the Transition Academy, and it comes out of the meeting that the administration and Building Committee had with the Department of Ed. As they were telling us that we couldn't do what we had originally thought we could do with Transition Academy, they informed us that there is a new, not sure how to phrase it, but there's a new reimbursement rate for some of their grants for administration offices, which may be of some interest to the Building Committee as we move forward. As most of us know, if you're building administrative offices, you get 50% reimbursement, 50% of what you would normally get. So if we would expect 47%, there's a 10% reduction in that because it is new construction as opposed to renovation. So it brings it down to 37% reimbursement, and that gets cut in half because it is attached to a town building instead of a school building. So the reimbursement would be 18.5% of the portion of the Town Hall that is built for the Board Administration Offices. Very rough calculations, somewhere around $1 million would be expected to be returned. The Department of Ed informed us on Friday that if you build your administration offices attached to a school building, and it can be attached either part of the building or through a corridor or something, a hallway, something like that, you do not have that 50% reduction or the 10% penalty. So instead of 18.5% reimbursement and roughly $1 million back, if everything went through, you would, you would look at a 47% reimbursement rate, which could be actually around $3 million. Those were the very rough preliminaries. I believe the architects are starting to do some rough financials to be able to give to the Building Committee so they have more information. That potentially could solve some issues that the Building Committee is having with overruns. You could basically see it as chopping off the third floor of the new Town Hall. I don't know what impact that has on things like the referendum vote, what needs to happen there. I don't think anyone has any answers to that right now. But again, these motions are for maximum flexibility. And as we've said in other reasons, other places, we don't, don't really have a strong need to be in one place or another to have administration offices. That's not what we do as a Board of Ed. We educate. So if it makes more sense for the town long-term financially and otherwise to move that to another location, something that, you know, I think all of us could agree on, you know, we can be flexible on that and do whatever needs to be done. Any questions in regards to this motion? Dr. Braverman?
Is there?
One more time.
Is there a definition of what constitutes a school site?
So one of our actual schools. So one of the seven buildings that we have currently. That would be what constitutes it. So it would have to be either in or attached to one of those buildings if that was the path chosen.
And we could add on to a school if that was...
We potentially could do that, yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Can I have someone read the last motion on here? Mrs. Gion.
Move that the Newington Board of Education approve the education specifications for the Board of Education Administrative Offices located at Newington Town Hall.
And a second by Dr. Braverman. This is the other half of that. If things go as they've been planned for some time, and the administration offices are on the third floor of the new building that's being built, this is the grant, these are the ed specs for the grant application that would cover that. Any further questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now move on to action item two, resignation and agreement. Mrs. Gion, can you read the recommended motion?
Move the Board of Education accept the resignation of Dr. William C. Collins and authorize the chairperson to enter into negotiated agreement with him.
And a second by Mr. Vassella. I will start the discussion. There is an agreement in principle between the Board and the superintendent, as you're all aware, whereby he would be resigning. I reviewed the agreement in its draft form on Saturday afternoon for the first time and sent back some edits to Board Council. I believe it's been sent over to Dr. Collins and his attorney for review right now, so there's nothing ready to be executed, although I expect it will be in the next few days. The terms of the agreement that have been agreed to are as follows, and for members of the public's knowledge, there are two years remaining on Dr. Collins' contract. It was renewed effective August 28th, 2017, as there are two years remaining on his three-year contract. The terms of the agreement negotiated are that Dr. Collins will go on leave effective June 30th, 2018. He will stay on leave and use sick days for that time until August 31st of 2018. At that time, his resignation will be effective. He will continue to be on the Board, health care and dental policies, until he's eligible for Medicare or unless he's otherwise employed. That's a term that is in his current contract. And he'll get paid for his accrued 35 vacation days, as stipulated in his contract as well. In the agreement, there'll be a full release of claims and a non-disparagement clause that goes both ways between the Board and Dr. Collins. For the Board members, as another reminder, and for the public, obviously, the Board has met in many executive sessions. What is done in executive sessions are deliberations between Board members. Those types of deliberations concerning a central office employee are authorized under the Freedom of Information Act. It's a time for Board members to be able to discuss freely without public repercussions, essentially. I know there are many people who want to know exact reasons why and why not, and was this the Board, was it Dr. Collins, what's going on. Unfortunately, we're not going to answer those questions, and we're never going to answer those questions. These are private deliberations between Board members. In my opinion, we've done things the lawful way and the correct way, both ethically and legally. We also have continuing obligations under the agreement with Dr. Collins that we'll enter into. So to members of the public who require some sort of answer, I apologize that you're not going to get it. However, that's the appropriate way to run the Board in our estimation. Is there any further discussion from the Board on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Can I have someone read action item three, the appointment of the acting superintendent? Mr. Vassella?
Move the Board of Education appoint Pamela Maraca to serve as the acting superintendent of schools effective July 1, 2018, pending the Department of Education approval.
And a second by Mr. Branda. As we discussed, and the Board authorized me to discuss with Ms. Maraca, we felt that since there is immediate need at all times to have a superintendent, it would be most appropriate to have our deputy superintendent, who has been involved in the operations of the district for quite a long time, to step in place of Dr. Collins effective July 1. Since she's not certified as a superintendent, we do require Department of Ed approval, which will be sought. I did have a conversation, as the Board allowed me to, with Ms. Maraca to talk about what was going on, to ask her to take on the role, and she has accepted. There is no real plan in terms of short-term or longer-term while we're searching for a new superintendent, but that's something that those conversations will continue. But the immediate need of the district will be met, and she certainly has already been stepping up to get ready for this transition. Is there any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And moving on to our last action item for the evening, designation of Personnel Search Committee. Can I have someone read the motion? Thank you, Mrs. Gion.
Move the Board of Education appoint all members of the Board to serve as the superintendent of school search committee in accordance with CGS 1-207.
And a second by Mr. Branda. This is how we start the search for a new superintendent. We are all appointed as members of the Board. That allows us to be able to have discussions as a Board without posting a public meeting so that we can determine strategy and things like that as we go through the process. It's my full anticipation that we will be giving public updates as we go through the process, as well as involving public during some of the panels. If any of you have been involved in some of the principal or administrative searches over the years, you know, typically, this is not a short-term process. It is likely to take the vast majority of the next nine to 12 months potentially, so that we do a thorough search. We involve all of our stakeholders, both in the community and in the school systems, and this is the first step to do that. Any questions or comments from the Board on this? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now move on to public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities, and our phones are open at 860-665-8736.
Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. While I respect the confidentiality of your executive sessions, and I know how it works, I question why some of the statements you've made tonight. I saw on Facebook earlier compliments about the negotiations and how well they went. I find it very disturbing, very disturbing, that you can have an executive session, not give me or anyone else any answers, but there are people in this town that know what went on behind closed doors. At least, I think they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
I couldn't agree with Rose Lyons more. John Bishan, 56, Maple Hill Avenue, but I'll get to that in a second. Your first orders of business, when you talked about the trailers not being suitable, I hate to tell you, but they're already ordered and on their way. I saw that at the recent Building Committee meeting. And that's another whole problem that we have in this town. I also would like to ask you, and your other idea of having a separate building for the Transition Academy is an absolutely bizarre concept to me, as well as moving the Town Hall off of the site completely. That would have been a great discussion to have in minute one of this process. We're now in hour 11, minute 59, and second 59. They're already putting utility poles in and plowing full steam ahead when they can't even afford a lot of the things that were approved in referendum. So again, that would have been a great discussion to have in the beginning. Another issue that came up at the last Building Committee meeting. The architect is saying tough luck. You may very well have to move an entire department off-site for the life of forever, for the forever. So has anyone figured out the cost of rent for the life of the building, and how much more that adds to the cost of this project? Because that's something that the taxpayers should know. So to be clear about the superintendent, I did say from the beginning that as a department head, you are automatically accountable for anything that happens. We did not need a consultant to make that case. In fact, as I said before, the consultant, if anything, helped to exonerate his personal responsibility, in my opinion. Again, I understand he's gone. I'm not going to lose any sleep over it whatsoever. I don't share the strong positive emotions that some people have. I only felt the need to defend somebody who seemed to have everyone against him. As some of you might know, I had a contentious debate with him over the Freedom of Information request for a contract, and I was not happy with the way that he handled that, or his publicly funded law firm that defended him, who basically made up accusations that were not true. So his resignation... So, his resignation is a termination of a contract. I don't understand why you would say that in his contract, he's allowed lifetime insurance because he is choosing to terminate the contract. So, that proves that you negotiated with him for the terms of this resignation behind closed doors, and I agree with Rose. If you're going to hold this hard line, that you're not going to tell anybody anything that went on, in such a tone that you used already, you're hurting yourselves, and I think that you should really reconsider that. The public deserves some understanding. You don't have to go into every single detail, but some part of the thought process. And this non-disparagement clause, that leaves other towns vulnerable. What if he goes and gets a job for somewhere else, and you felt that he, you know, you negotiated to have him leave, and he's going to end up in another town? That would make you culpable, in a way. So, I hope there's not going to be positive letters of recommendation. So, again, I agree with Rose. I think you should reconsider and at least share some of your thought process of what went into this, some of the mechanics that went into this, and if you could at least answer that question that I had about him voluntarily terminating the contract. That means the terms of the contract would be terminated. Sick days, I can understand. I don't think you could take those away. But the lifetime insurance thing, I don't see how that would be something that would have to be continued. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishon.
Jen Rodriguez, 71 Northwood Road. Couple of things that came up in conversation that I wanted to just talk to you really quickly. The idea of moving the Newington Public School Central Office to one of the other buildings and maybe having a corridor, am I understanding that, to save money or get reimbursement? My only concern with that is, from a security standpoint, Central Office is open to the public currently because it's here, and if it's attached to a building and you have the public coming in and out, I have security concerns, and how are you going to handle those security concerns, working within the schools and the world that it is right now? My other is a topic that was not discussed today, but I think that it needs to be brought to the forefront, and many of you may have received emails from parents about this, because we've been hearing whispers. At my particular school, which is Anna Reynolds, we have a third-grade class that is at 24, 25 students per class. That is not equitable across the district. It is not fair to the students or the families. When that particular class came through, they were at five sections in kindergarten, five sections in first grade, and when they moved into second grade, they were consolidated down to four sections because of budget and what was happening with the zero budget or the 2% or .02, or whatever the numbers were at the time. So, I am concerned. You know, all the studies show that when you get over a certain number, the kind of education that's presented, the amount of differentiated instruction that you can provide per student, the amount of minutes given to those students, is obviously decreased. So, I do have concerns about that. I don't think that it's equitable across the district in terms, if you look at the other buildings and the number of students per class at that grade level. So, I do have some concerns about that from an education and a parent's standpoint that I think needs to be discussed. I kind of go back off of what I believe Rose said about if it is privately deliberated, whatever you guys talk about in your private sessions, that it needs to stay there. And I think that our Board of Ed members need to be held accountable when they're going on social media, and they are dropping hints or innuendos or kind of feeding rumors to the public. It's not appropriate. So, if it's supposed to be held tightly and quietly, then I think you guys are all supposed to be held to a code of conduct of that, and if you're finding that not everybody's doing that, I don't know what your ramifications are for those public servants or not, but you know, that's concerning as well. Search for the super. I'm glad to hear that there will be panels involved in terms of the public, parents, staff members. There are some whisperings about previous administrators throwing their hat into the ring, so I think as an educator and a parent in town, we like to hear that parents and educators are allowed to be on those panels to kind of give feedback and to help interview and vet some of the people that might be coming through. That's it.
Dana Havens, 113 Stoddard Avenue. In terms of your Transition Academy, since that's the field I work in, I would urge you to look for or to building a ranch-style home, either, you know, on campus somewhere or close by. Part of my job, and I would assume the transition job, is to help these guys transition from home to their own apartment. So, having a home where they can learn the basic life skills of cleaning and cooking is very important. And as far as these rumors and innuendos, just don't listen to what you see on social media. Take a look, and then investigate and look for links. That's what I do. That's what you have to do.
I'm going to pause you for one second. Just a minute. Okay. Ms. Igelsky, if you're watching, please call back, and I'll get you. Continue.
And as an example, just today, we heard you say that he was going to continue his health and dental until he's 65, and somebody already said a lifetime. So, you can't go by what you hear. Look for documentation. Thank you.
Is there any further public participation? Ms. Igelsky, if you're still watching, I promise I'll do better. Pick up. Well, I feel poorly, but she does have my cellphone number, so maybe she'll call me.
Can I just clarify one thing?
Sure.
Sorry for that mistake, Dana, about the lifetime thing. I thought that it was understood. I meant lifetime until you could collect.
Oh, here we go.
Okay, go ahead.
You're on with the Board.
Good evening. This is Judy Igelsky, 23 Old Musket Drive in Newington. As a former Board member during all of the 90s, I find that what you have been doing is very extraordinary. First of all, I want to say thank you to Dr. Collins for his vision of the academies and moving our students forward. I appreciate the work that he has done. I am amazed at the flexibility of the Board at this time and how many different specifications you've had to review and agree to. And also, I'm very happy that the state has worked so quickly with you to get as much done as you have received. Good luck to the Board members on the search committee. I've been on a search committee. It is not easy. I do find that some of the comments on the social media, which I try to avoid, have been rude and very unkind, and it's unfortunate. I believe the people in Newington are better than what we're reading on social media. Good luck. Again, thank you to Dr. Collins for what he has accomplished, and to each Board member, thank you for what you've been doing. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Igelsky. Thank you for your patience.
So, again, I'm sorry for making that mistake. I just thought it was assumed, or I assumed, anyway, that normally you don't pay for insurance after Medicaid or only for supplemental. As far as the search goes, I hope we look for someone more homegrown. I think we need someone that has a stake in the community and not a ladder climber or a rising professional. I really feel strongly about that. I wouldn't mind seeing any other, anybody come in from, who's retired, who would like to come back in and take over. I'm up here. I usually forget things when I leave the table, but, oh, again, so, back to that insurance clause, I believe that if a person voluntarily, in his contract, I read, that the parties can agree to terminate the contract, then I would believe that the terms, especially the insurance benefit, would most likely also go away, could go away, but I believe that proves that you made a deal with him in this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishon. I'm just slightly confused, because our motion is to approve a negotiated agreement, so there's no mystery that it was a negotiated agreement between the Board and Dr. Collins. My reference to contract clauses is that they were in his contract already, so they remained in the agreement.
Good evening. Wayne Alexander, 28 Burton Lane. You know, maybe I'm just wrong about this, so correct me if I'm wrong. Everyone on this Board supposedly knows about the Code of Professional Responsibility for School Administrators. In that code, it has a specific provision, and that provision says that they have, all school administrators have a responsibility to obey the law. The town paid for a licensed environmental professional to come into Newington and do a full review after that oil spill. And guess what we found? We found that a federal regulation, which is a law, which is just as good as, has the force of law, that particular thing was ignored. And you know how we know it was ignored? Because Mr. Jackamowitz and Mr. Collins were having this conversation on an open line. They didn't even know it was open. So, you know that they were communicating truths to each other. They are responsible for not obeying the law that would have prevented this oil spill. And I asked, I asked if people would understand that the very, very first thing you do is you obey the law. And it's kind of, it's kind of interesting that you know that somebody was disobedient of laws that cost you so much money in this town, and you would negotiate a settlement with this individual. Yet you would say, okay, you know, we're going to let you go, and then, and then have the temerity to tell the entire public, nope, we're not going to tell you a thing. You know, there's this little thing about something's rotten in the state of Denmark here, you know? Doesn't smell right. And maybe, maybe what's going to happen is people are going to remember this, and they're going to pay attention, and they're going to go, hmm. And maybe you have the opportunity right now to discuss amongst yourselves how much of this you want to release to the public in Newington. That's, that's basically the point here. Something that didn't need to happen, happened on Dr. Collins' watch, and he knows he's responsible, and he knows he's responsible for all the people down the line. Nobody, nobody wants to talk about it. Not good. That's all.
Thank you for your kind words, Mr. Alexander. Any further comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to remarks by Board members. Mr. Parker.
Steve Parker, 180 Indian Hill Road, Newington. Well, you guys finally got him. You've been trying for a few years. Certain people in town had their eye on him, waiting for a mistake. Dr. Collins was one of the best things that ever happened to this town. Ask anybody whose kids went to school in this town. Ask teachers. He made a big difference. But when you guys have your eyes on him, people on the Council have their eyes on him, and Facebook has their eyes on him, anything he did was something you could all go run to the press with and do whatever you want. You've been gunning for him for a long time, but he had a good run here, and we thank Dr. Collins for everything he did. But boy, oh, boy, from somebody in the media, I know that when you guys were coming after him, you had a mission. And the fuel leak was perfect, because you couldn't get him on the buses, you couldn't get him on anything else you wanted to get him on. But you said the fuel leak, and we all know that there were more people than Dr. Collins involved that fuel leak, and more departments involved that fuel leak than just the school system. So, for what it's worth, let's all remember the good that he did for the town. And for those of you who've been gunning for him all this time, you should be ashamed of yourselves, and there's people on both sides of the aisle that should be ashamed of themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to remarks by Board members. Dr. Braverman.
I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed commencement last Tuesday. We had more than 350?
Two, 290.
290, okay. 290 students graduate. Everyone has great plans going on to four-year colleges or military, great jobs, such a terrific class. Every single one, we got to shake hands with each one, so I want to say how proud I am of each and every one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braverman. Mr. Vasella?
I guess just my own comment on this, what's transpired here today. I just want to thank the Board members as we face very difficult decisions, very difficult ideas and topics that went on. And I think that, again, just want to thank everybody around the table for doing the best job that they could for the town of Newington.
Thank you, Mr. Vasella. Ms. Stam. Mr. Sylvia?
No comment.
Mr. Tufel?
I would like to say that I enjoyed the commencement. The kids were excellent. We shook a lot of hands, wet ones, cold ones, hot ones. The kids did a heck of a job, and so did the speakers. I'd like to congratulate all the valedictorian, salutatorium, president, the student council, and all the other members that spoke.
Thank you. Mr. Tufel? Mr. Branda?
Well, I'm going to start by thanking a man who dedicated over 15 years of his career to our town. Whatever the end result was, whatever you think, he still dedicated his time and his career to making sure that our children had the best education possible during that time. So, for that, I thank him. I agree with several members of the community who spoke about certain items on social media that seem to be very much in the know, when we talk about certain items that probably shouldn't be in the know. I think it probably started a few years ago, but even with the audio tape of the Freedom of Information Act request, that neither the town nor the person who said they got that request were able to give me a copy of that. So, you know, things like that really kind of piqued my interest, and today I saw some things on there that seemed very well-informed, even I felt like I learned some things before. So, you know, maybe sometimes you do need to go to social media, because I find out things. So, I think we need to start moving forward, and the only way to do that is to stop playing the games that some people have been playing for several years, similar to what Mr. Parker said. Because while you may get that short-term personal gain, the long-term damage to this town in our search that's coming up or anything like that could be very detrimental to this town. And lastly, I just want to thank Pamela for stepping up and the whole team for their willingness to step up during what I'm sure is going to be a tough transition for them, and hopefully, they are able to keep things afloat and show the teachers and our students and our parents that while this is a bump in the road, we're going to be in good shape. We're going to continue to thrive in the way that we have for the years that Dr. Collins was here, and I just hope that we can start to come together and start remembering what we're all here for. Thank you.
Mrs. Guyen?
I also wanted to start by thanking Dr. Collins for all of his service to our town. He has really dedicated a large portion of his life, in addition to his career, to the betterment of our school system and to the benefit of our students. He's moved the district forward in many He's moved the district forward in many areas, in ways that I did not even think were possible, on the technology front with the academies. So he has, I think he has left his mark on our town, and I wanted to thank him for all of his, his service. I also was alarmed by things that were on social media. I, when we talk an executive session, I take that very seriously, I think it's very important that executive session is kept that way. I mean, that's, the whole purpose of going into executive session is to have a private conversation, and for many, there's many reasons for that, and it's alarming to me when it doesn't seem to be, that those conversations are not kept private. It makes it harder to function as a board, and I think it's important for us to be able to work together, and I hope that that does not continue. I'd also, I guess, would like to thank Pamela for stepping up, I think that's going to be very helpful in our transition. And also, congratulations to, congratulations to all of the graduates, it was a really nice graduation, and it was, I loved being there, so I thought I was, I'm happy for them, excited and proud.
Thank you, Mrs. Guyon. Just a couple of things before I roll into some other comments. Ms. Rodriguez, the point you made about security, when I was first told that that was something that could be a possibility, that's the first thing out of the administration's mouth, was if that was something that ever happened, there would have to be X, Y, and Z just off the top of their heads for how you would make that a secure environment, so, absolutely. Heard, understood, on the forefront of our minds, if that was even something that the town wanted to consider moving forward, always. So thank you for, for that. In terms of, I know there's some comments about, you know, people throwing their hat in the ring, that they're hearing rumors already about, from my perspective at least, and I think the majority of the board, this is not, there's no one in mind. This is a true search, that is the intent of it. There is no timeframe, you know, other than what other districts have gone through. The hope is that we find the right person for Newington Public Schools to move forward, and make sure our children continue to have exceptional educations moving forward into the future. So, if we don't find a good candidate in the first go-around, then we may need to hit pause and start over again, so it's a matter of finding the right person that's going to fit in Newington, and be someone that has a vision for, you know, the next 10 to 20 years. I do also want to, you know, express my thanks and gratitude to Dr. Collins for his years of service as superintendent, as principal at the high school, and as a teacher decades before that. He was my high school principal for three years, who I knew very well when I was in high school, and I certainly didn't think that, when I became chair, that there would be an agreement for his, with his resignation attached to it. So, you know, his, his mark is going to be felt by the school district for a very long time. He had some lofty aspirations for the district, and we've met quite a few of them, if you really think back over the last 10 years, and really for me, going into any classroom or reading anything about our schools, I was in high school when he was there, and he moved on to be superintendent right after, and the difference between what happens in our schools when I was in them, and what happens in them now, is, is so incredibly different, in a positive way. So I want to thank him for all of his efforts there. I do also want to congratulate our graduates again, we don't typically have a meeting after graduation, but I thought it was just a great event, there was a great speech by a member of the Board of Ed that you guys all talked about so much, and the kids were ecstatic, you could really tell how meaningful it is in their life to graduate high school, and to do so with honors, and have a future ahead of them. So it's a really incredible time for those kids, and I'm fortunate, we're all fortunate that we get to be a part of that, and see what the real end result of all the volunteer hours that we put in, is giving these kids the best opportunity for the future, and to help, help our town. So, congratulations, graduates, enjoy the summer. I saw one of the graduates who I recognized from some of the events at Morton Sense over the weekend getting ice cream, so they're already working for the summer, you know, saving up for tuition, or for rent, or for whatever it is, so congratulations and enjoy. To the board members, thank you for your time throughout this school year, this is probably two or three times as many meetings as I've ever had in one school year as a board member. There are more to come. So, thank you, enjoy, you know, the weather that's going on, and I'm sure we'll see you at a meeting in the next couple of weeks, because we need to get started with our search for a new superintendent. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Bye, Dr. Braverman, seconded by Mrs. Guyon. All in favor? Aye. And we are joined at 8:54 PM.